Mike Williams.
Here. Item number one, an ordinance to release performance bond, letter of credit, number 547, an amount of $60,000, and to accept a one-year maintenance bond, GSM 15388, an amount of $6,989.85 for all public improvements, for the extension of West Robert Street, 60 by 100.5 right away, and the Thames subdivision located at 1010 West Robert Street in accordance with as-built plans by Andrew, forward dated 2/21/2015. Josh?
They've completed construction at the end of Robert, and they're wanting to release the bond. We have approvals from all departments, and everything's good to go. So, they've gone through their one-year maintenance period, and everything's held up, so.
Any questions from the council?
Nope.
Any public comments or questions?
Item number two, an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by First Presbyterian Church to allow a memorial garden located at 411 West Church Street in accordance with the site plan dated 7/30/2015. Zone MX-CDD Historic District, Mayor Kate. Recommended approval with conditions by zoning commission. Josh?
The conditions are that the approval shall be with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon change in ownership of the property being First Presbyterian Church, and two, all local and state cemetery requirements are met. Those were the conditions, and I told you I'd have them for you this meeting, and that's it.
Any questions or comments from the council?
From the public? Item number three, an ordinance for the annexation into the Hammond City Limits, initial zoning to be CH, and to be placed in Council District Five, requested by Alma M. Callie for Track One of the Callie Ballard Mini Partition being 1.346 acres located on the northwest corner of North Morrison Boulevard and West University Avenue in accordance with its survey by WMJ Boden Jr., dated 7/31/2015. There are two attachments. Josh?
This is an annexation and a rezoning in one. They're annexing into the city on that, as you know, the northwest corner of that intersection, and they're wanting to go from, when you annex in, you're R8, and this is putting them as CH, which is a better fit.
And CH is...
Commercial highway.
Commercial highway.
Yes.
I think they're planning on building a service station.
Correct. It's a gas station. We already have plans on it, so we're reviewing that right now.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you.
From the public? Thank you, Josh. Number four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances to add Article Four regarding transportation network companies, LACI.
This is to update our transportation code to allow such providers as Uber to come in and offer services within the city. So what is before you is an amendment to the code that talks about the background checks, the insurance requirements, the other requirements that we will have of any sort of company like Uber that would come in and provide this service.
Just one question, Mr. President. In LACI, so have we tried to mirror our ordinance with a community that currently uses?
Yes. Actually, this, when Uber came into the market in Louisiana, especially in South Louisiana, they approached several communities at the same time. They had some different opinions about whether they should come in in locations where there were already a lot of active taxi services provided, and so those ordinances are different from what ours is. In Lafayette, though, this ordinance is actually modeled after Lafayette's ordinance, and incorporates a lot of discussion that they had and that they had in other states to make sure that the background requirements, the insurance requirements, all those things that would, you know, make it kind of problematic to get into somebody's vehicle and take a ride are covered in our ordinance. The other thing that we do know about Uber is that they send you a picture of your driver and of the vehicle to confirm so that you, as the customer, know what to be on the lookout for, and then you get to rate Uber after the experience, and they also get to rate you as a customer after the experience. So there is no money that is actually handled according to the transaction. All of it is done by credit card. So that's one difference between what you may have in a regular taxicab service versus what you would have in this situation.
Any other questions or comments from the council? From the public? Right, please. We'll move right into our regularly scheduled meeting. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt. Jason Hood.
Here.
Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Mr. Peters, would you leave some prayers, please?
God, thank you today for your many blessings. We thank you, God, for all that you've done, what you're doing now, and we pray, God, for the East Coast, for all the people that are being inundated with floods. We pray for soldiers that know all of the wars and so forth. We pray, God, that you just look down on us. And this, God, we pray for this city. We pray for the leadership of the city, the council, the mayor, and the administration, all who are working together to make Hammond a better place. We ask, God, that you lead and guide us, keep us, is our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, all military and veterans of Renn and Prop. Slough. Bobby Mitchell, can you leave some prayers, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with everything and justice for all.
Do we have any council reports?
I can report, Mr. President, and the rest of the council, that we had a, we were able to have our first STEM Fest activity in Hammond over the weekend, and we had a great turnout. We had over 500 kids, kids and parents, to participate. We were able to get that many people sign up in a matter of four days. We had four days, and we got, we filled the whole roster up, and the mayor was there. I mean, he stayed there for almost an hour, two hours, or so was it, after being at the park earlier that morning. But it was a great event, and the school system, Jake Kelly, who was a school board member, Beacon Light Baptist Church, DRH Ministries was also a sponsor in the event, and the city of Hammond did a great job of providing facilities and staff, and had it not been for the Michael J. Kennedy Center, it wouldn't have been as successful as it was. So, I think it was a great collaborative effort between those entities, and the goal is to try to have a STEM Saturday, one Saturday a month. And like Dr. Mackey said, who owns our STEM NOLA, that, you know, we could put a basketball, a football in the kid's hand, they learn, they play football or basketball, but if we put STEM in their hands, they can learn, and they can want to become an astronaut or a scientist. So, you know, one of our goals is to really push that initiative. So, I appreciate the city and the school board for their efforts, and I think we're going to have a good STEM program once a month in the city. So, that's our goal. That's my report.
Any other council reports? Mayor?
That was a great event, and well participated by many families and kids. So, it was, you could tell they were enjoying themselves, especially when outside popping those, shooting those rockets. Also, in the park, we had the fishing area, which had about just as many people. The entire pond was pretty much encircled by family and friends and kids and grandparents and grandchildren. So, it was a successful event as well. Lisa Lambert, pretty much single-handedly put that thing together and did a really good job with sponsorships and working with the wildlife and fisheries. The fire department was big out there. Police Department participated and kept folks from fishing the pond. They brought the fish in on Thursday, so it was kind of a stealth mission. We didn't let it go out too much. So, we didn't have much problems with that. But that was a successful event as well. And then went over to the Harley-Davidson shop where they had a barbecue contest, and Eric Farris showed up over there to give them some tips. You had the fire department, police department, unions both there. And as usual, Harley-Davidson is as good a corporate partnership can be, is giving all those proceeds back to all the nonprofits. Punch Tool was there as well, and so that was a good event. So, thanks to everyone with the park and the STEM that, with Team Hammond that participated and made it all a successful event. It was a great weekend in Hammond.
Police Department wanted barbecue.
Which one? What's your name?
Michael Lord and Kevin Hall.
They had a heck of a rotisserie. They were the only ones that weren't working this out. They had a rotisserie that Brian made for them that had the motor on it. So, you just laid the rocks like you see in Dixie, and all the food just rotisserie, and they were having their cocktails while everybody was working for those hot meals. It was a pretty good setup. I was impressed.
Yep. All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the September 15th meeting? If so, I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt. Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution number one, a new business, a resolution to accept the bid of Lenko Industries Incorporated, DBA, Lenko Armored Vehicles, for the purchase of a Lenko Bearcat G2 vehicle SWAT unit for the police department for the price of $249,790. Ernest Peters.
Thank you. We are coming to get approval for the city to purchase this SWAT vehicle for the police department. Lenko Bearcat was the, Lenko Industries was the bidder, came in at a very good price. We properly bid it, so therefore we just come for approval at $249,790.
Where's the money coming from, Mr.?
Coming from the police.
It's millage. Over the years, we've been frugal and saved the money. We have approximately $318,000 left that we've been saving that will come out to purchase this vehicle.
And Chief, you think at this time, that's the best use of that money? I'm just asking.
Yes. Let me tell you, you know, if I may, a lot of people say that, well, this is maybe a scary-looking thing. Well, in a way, that's good. But let me tell you what was scary. Up in your area, about a week ago, we had a subject in a house that had 21 felony warrants. Our SWAT team went up there. I was there with them to see. But what was scary was six of them holding on to the running boards of these Tahos with no protection whatsoever and driving up in front of this house. That's what's scary. You know, this is something that we hope we'd never have to use. We've had, we've had to assist the sheriff's office a couple times. We've had two other incidences here. One of them was down in this part of town, and it was a sovereign citizen. They did have weapons. We were just lucky enough to get them out of the house. We went up to AME, we assisted the sheriff, the police department there, and this is for our police officer's protection. It could be used certainly for a citizen that would be maybe injured or hurt to take this vehicle in and rescue that person. Y'all all see the news. You know, I had rather be prepared and have something like this than I have a tragedy happen, and we have no way to get in and help get these people out or get our police officers in safely. So, I think it's well worth the money. I just, I believe it is for everything that I've seen and everything that we've done with the SWAT team. Our SWAT team is very, very good. They practice, they go to compete every year. They have beat people like Sreesport. I think that they're tied with Baton Rouge. So, these guys are very hard-working people. They know what they're doing, and I think they deserve the protection that this vehicle will give them. Any questions? I'll be certainly glad to answer.
Mr. President, before we go too far into this, Andre, this would be a question for you. Wouldn't this be an ordinance, not a resolution, because of the amount of money?
Well, it depends on if this money is budgeted. If this money is in the budget, then it doesn't require an ordinance. If you've got to change the budget in some sort of way to move money around, then you've got to amend, basically, your budget, and that would require an ordinance.
Okay.
Along with that question, if we're accumulating monies in, from millage dollars, is that money budgeted annually, or does it show where we have a reserve in? And so, do we budget for this item? I mean, even if you have money available...
Basically, this millage money rolls over every year.
Yeah. My guess what I'm saying is that even if you have money available and your budget is for this to be in your reserve, and then now you're going to just arbitrarily just spend a quarter of a million dollars, did you not have any idea that you wanted to do this, like, six months ago?
I've had that idea for three years. I've been saving money.
Why wasn't it addressed in the budget?
Because I never had the money.
So, did you generate the money, like, in the last three months?
No, in the last three years.
So, my point is, we just had budgets in June, so this is October. So, and we're in the first quarter of the year, and why didn't we, you didn't just generate $300,000 in the last three months? So, if you were anticipating making the purchase, why wouldn't we have discussed this and give us some time to review this and think about the, you know, the investment we're going to be making versus, you know, two minutes before the, in the council meeting?
Chief, explain what the millage money is used for.
I'm sorry? Millage money is used basically for equipment.
I understand. I'm very, I'm very aware of that.
This is the way I look at it, Mr. Lamar. I don't quite understand your question.
Let me say again.
My question is, my answer is this.
Let me give you the question again.
Okay.
We present budgets in May.
This wasn't in a budget.
That's my point, and I think that's what the council, Hood, just asked, was it budgeted?
No.
No, sir. No, sir. Please, all I'm asking is, I know, Mr. President, I'm just saying that typically, when we spend this amount of money, it's done in ordinance. That's all I was trying to clarify.
This is being done...
I'm not questioning the purpose of it.
This is being done just like our vehicles will be. As soon as the state contract comes out, I'll go with Mr. Ernest. We'll look at the contract, see what it is, and then we'll come back, just like we're purchasing this. It's millage money, not budgeted money. It's budgeted, but not in the city budget.
So, it's not drug dollars? It's not coming from the drug money?
No, this is not drug dollars. No.
But you could use drug dollars and other court-award funds for things like this.
Yeah, we could. Yes. Yes. But we've been saving millage money over the years to purchase something like this.
Very much like the fire department saves money to purchase the ladder truck or whatever they wanted to purchase.
Believe me, it's worth, if you save one police officer's life or one citizen's life, it's worth $240,000, $50,000.
My thing is with this, I don't see this as a need for Hammond, a military vehicle that'll take a fit to council around. What is going on in Hammond that we need to militarize our police department?
Nothing at the present time. But I'm sure Oregon didn't anticipate anything happening either. I'm sure the school, all those children killed, I'm sure they didn't anticipate anything happening.
And you think that this type of vehicle would be appropriate to go in?
I'm sorry?
You think that if those schools or whatever had, those towns had this type of equipment?
It's possible. Yes, ma'am. I don't know what kind of equipment they had, because I'm not familiar with their departments. But it's just like we buy vests for police officers. We don't anticipate being using them. But if you ever need it, it's a good thing to have.
Chief, there are other departments that have this type of vehicle.
Sheriff's Office has something similar, but his is more military. This is more designed for law enforcement.
600 agencies throughout the national field. It's going to include 97, tops of 100 over there.
Look at what it can do. How fast it can run. What we can store.
Well, it's got a Ford motor in it, I think.
Basically, built on F-550 chassis.
Just to make an appearance for the record.
Officer Drago, Hammond Police Department. It's built on a F-550 chassis, so it's got a 6.7 liter diesel engine. So, basically, any of your one-ton vehicles that are driving around the road's got the same engine, the same chassis, same struts, everything, as that vehicle does. It's got the same components, same drive train.
Thing about this thing, you could take officers into a situation, and they're safe. Like, when we went up there in Mike's, they rode for better than two blocks, just hanging on the side of one of our police cars. And that guy was known to have weapons. He didn't have any at that time, but he's known to have. You know, and it's a scary situation when you see six officers going down the road, holding on to the side of a car.
Chief, I think one question, Mr. President, that Councilman Blunt had was also the storage. Where would you store this?
Oh, we can store it out at the training center. We have room there.
Do you think it would be accessible in the amount of time out there for that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. All these officers, the SWAT team, they're dedicated, like, Drago is a unit commander. You know, they have different commanders on different ones, and if somebody, if he'd happen to be not in town, somebody else is here and available to get it.
Another question, Mr. President. You did say that the sheriff's department has a similar vehicle?
They have, they have some from the milit, it's a military vehicle, yes.
And how often are they engaging that vehicle?
I have no idea.
So, and that was a point, I'm kind of glad you said that, because I, my personal opinion is, you know, I'm never going to just say no, just anything. I really don't feel comfortable, because the optics just doesn't, you know, sit with me, you know, right off the bat, without even looking at the data to kind of make a decision. So, my question would be, is if we, and I know we talk about, when we talk about crime, there's always a comment that there really is no crime in Hammond. And, you know, we talk about, there is crime, and it's petty crime and that type of stuff. You know, I don't know when the last time we've had a situation when this was, would be needed, or what would be the justifiable amount of occurrences that would require us to invest a quarter of a million dollars in a piece of equipment in that regard. So, one thing I would like to know, just from a, just being responsible with our dollars, is, is this something that we can, can be shared across a parish or across a region or with other different departments, and if you're sharing those resources because of the need and the frequency of usage, does that make more sense? And I personally would like to really know that and see the data that drives that decision. You know, are we making a decision based on data and based on real information? Are we making our decision based on the fact that we just happen to have saved enough money to pay it?
We're based on, we're based on information that's all around the country that's happening.
And do you have that data?
I'm sorry? Do I have?
Do you have the data, so we could take a look at it?
I just know what I see on the news every night.
It would be nice to be able to see the data.
You know, we have Southeastern right here. We have some of Southeastern's police officers on our ISRT team. We work very closely with that.
I'm not disputing that. I just, I think it would be advisable, just for me, my personal, to help me make a decision. I like to be able to see the data that justifies the frequency and the utilization of this type of equipment, and is that, if that makes sense.
I don't know that you can find that data, to be quite honest with you.
All right. Thanks.
It's something that y'all have to decide, and if something does happen, we've been here and done that, so it's, you know, I would ask you to approve it. I think it's something that we definitely need for something if it does happen.
The last train they did was out at the Army National Guard, and just what he said, both units from TPSO in Hammond went swinging in, hanging on to the side of the Tahoe. What this vehicle does, and as you said, sure, people aren't going to be carrying a, what did you say, a 50? But the M16s can go through the Tahos, and they can clip people, and you've been in the service. So, what this vehicle does is protect them, like that one shield that most of them have when they're standing behind the person with the one shield 5D. This is a protection for them coming in. So, you're talking about the protection of law enforcement hiding behind a vehicle, going into a scene, and/or being inside of it, not strapped onto it, to where they can come out the back when they get to the scene and only have to go around the vehicle and not race across it, a green field, a grass, or whatever parking lot. You just started my safety.
My, and I somewhat agree with Councilman Marshall. I guess a preference, if we had it, would be to maybe have discussed this in more detail, maybe during budget hearings. But that didn't happen, so I support this. It is a thin line between military and police, but just what happened in my district in a very nice neighborhood this week, last week, you know, I'm proud that we do have the resources to purchase this if we decide to do that. But I guess a preference in the future would be maybe to try to give us, you know, more...
Well, I mean, certainly it's left up to you five individuals. But the community voted for the millage, for the police department, and we have been frugal in using that millage. We knew that we needed something like this, and we just kept saving and saving and saving for it. There's not very many places that manufacture this type of, this type of vehicle. Very few. And, you know, I think that the money that the citizens said that we should have, I think it's well-used to buy something like this. It's not like it's like tax dollars.
I do appreciate, you know, I appreciate that, the management of that fund, and, you know, so that's not... Any, do we have any, any comments or questions from the public?
Yes, my name is Sal Nigalosi, 101, East Tamer Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. I'm like, listening to this, and basically, the sheriff's department does have a big vehicle, and I would assume if the city of Hammond, or Punchet Tool, or anywhere else needed that type of vehicle, and if it wasn't in use, which I don't think daily that vehicle's being in use. Now, I don't know about the money situation, because I don't really quite understand where the money's coming from. But we also want to protect our police, there's no doubt about that. I think if we could have a little time researching and check with the sheriff's department and they meet, and see how much time he's got to use that vehicle, or have personnel trained to take care of that vehicle and know how to operate it, you know, that's another element, too. You just get a vehicle without having people know what they're doing with it, then it's a different ballgame. So, I'm in favor of just more or less talking to the sheriff's department and see what can be done. And after the chief, you know, he wants to protect his men, you know, and I'm aware of that. So, I think the council feels like they haven't had enough time, what it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. Basically, to give you kind of an understanding of what the sheriff's office have and what we're asking for. Sheriff's Office have an MRAP, all right? That's a mine vehicle. Basically, it's three times the size of the vehicle we want. The gross weight of it is well over the weight of this vehicle. This vehicle is set up and designed by SWAT guys for SWAT guys. It was such a good vehicle, the military decided to take it and use it, because most of their urban tactics that they're using now come from us. This vehicle is not a military vehicle. This is a police vehicle. This was designed by SWAT guys for SWAT guys, from LA County Sheriff's Office. As far as the SWAT vehicle goes, the sheriff's office has, you have to go two lessons for that vehicle, in particular, from the military. This vehicle does not require such.
And then we have to get in touch with the sheriff's office, get it down here?
You have to have a driver, you have to have a certain driver to drive it, and it takes all those things.
And God knows, Southeastern, one of the schools, we got to call the sheriff's office. How long do you think it's going to take for us to get something down here?
We have a guy two blocks from where this vehicle's going to be stored. It's his responsibility to make sure this vehicle gets to the city.
I mean, it's a matter of human life. Not a matter of $250,000. To me, it's not.
So, let me ask you this. You know, I mean, it's just a difference in opinion, Chief. It's just like, to me, it's a matter of human life that we proactively focus on educating our public when it comes to, you know, trying to keep our kids off of drugs and those things. But we have drug money sitting in a budget somewhere, and I never see you come here and say, "Let's approve some funding so we can do some educational programs in our community so that we can have less kids on drugs or getting access to drugs." We do none of that. But when it comes to reacting to problems, we're gung-ho about that. I like to see you be as gung-ho when it comes to how we proactively...
Have you, have you read the law on what drug money can be used for?
I'm just, I'm just making a point to you.
I am, too. Have you read the...
No, I haven't. No, I haven't.
It's very restrictive.
I understand. But what I'm saying is that I would love to see that same sense of motion, sense of aggressiveness when it comes to preventing crime as it is, to fighting crime, because I think that's, that's my passion. And so, and so in this case, I just want to be, you know, if it's necessary for us to do this, maybe we do look at it from a regional perspective. Maybe we can support the smaller law enforcement groups like AME, the independents and those groups as well, because I'm sure they might have a similar need, and we might be able to share the cost. I just, I just think, I just, from a standpoint of me coming into a city council meeting and being asked to spend a quarter of a million dollars, when we don't get any conversation about it, I just think it's not, I don't like doing business.
That's what we're here for tonight.
I just wish that we would know, and we could probably have a special session or something like this for a quarter of a million dollars. So, we spend...
I think this is a proactive approach that you're taking there.
I mean, I just, it's just my opinion.
Thad is also a member of SRT. He wanted to have a word for it.
How you doing? I'm sorry. My name is Officer Thad Gattier. I'm with Hammond PD. I'm also on the special response team. I was a former assistant commander, and I worked with Sergeant Maschinsky a good bit to research this particular vehicle. I'm sorry, I kind of came in a few minutes late to the meeting, and I've heard talk about the sheriff's office MRAP and our vehicle as well. I'm kind of getting on the back end of the concerns. As far as what I know with other agencies, and I've worked with other agencies several times, I've worked with the state police, the sheriff's office, numerous law enforcement agencies, the sheriff's office does have their own vehicle, as does the state, and I can promise you, I can get your trooper up here, I can get your deputy up here, I can get Danny Levers up here, and he'll guarantee... and he'll guarantee, you can use this vehicle anytime you need it, unless it's earmarked somewhere else.
I think I'll say that.
If they need it, if another agency calls to need it, and the same day we need it, we won't have it. Self-sufficiency, to me, is always the best. Uh, we've looked at the MRAP ourselves, a couple of years ago. We determined that the vehicle does not fit the city of Hammond's needs, tactically. Financially, it might be a different story, but we, we focused on the tactical needs. Several of the streets are too small for the vehicle to be operated on. Uh, our maintenance barn cannot operate on that vehicle, they cannot work on that vehicle. If it breaks down, and they are prone to break down, because they're built for overseas use, we can't even get a tow truck to tow it. So, we'd have to get someone to fix it on-site. So, we determined that the sheriff's office vehicle really wasn't functional for our needs. Also, it's built to maneuver troops in a war zone from one area to another, and it's not built to deploy police in search warrant-type capacities, which we'd use it for. So, we did look at.
This would be used for a search warrant?
It'll be used for tactics, uh, the tactical team, it'll be used for barricade situations. It's basically a bulletproof vehicle, keeps us safe when we're going to the most dangerous operations in the city. Um, we go, we don't get called out for every little thing, you know, we get called out for very, very bad things to happen. And I know, um, and I'm sorry, I caught that tail end of what you were saying when you came in about crime. We don't have a lot of crime here, but we do occasionally have very, very bad crime, very, very bad criminals. So, this vehicle is not something we'd patrol the streets with, it'd be something that we would use when we're facing the worst of the worst, to keep our guys safe. As well as similar situations like school shootings, um, when we have to move wounded people out the way, we use this vehicle to get them in and out of an active shooting situation. And I can just about guarantee, we operate, uh, all over the parish. If another agency calls us for assistance, we go. I've worked with AME PD, Punchetula, Independence, not long ago, we had a call-out with AME, in support of their agency. And this vehicle would be utilized to support their agency.
God would barricade it in the house.
And what we've changed with our street crime unit, who's been working with all the other units, is we're going after felon, felony warrants, more than just misdemeanor warrants.
As far as the.
Any warrants are the ones that have the 21 warrants on them, and have possibility of having, uh, weapons with on them. I was originally all for getting the big vehicle, because of the money. You could get it relatively cheap, but it didn't suit their needs, so, and that's when they came back and researched it, and said that this fits
You also.
tactical needs of a rural, urban area.
You also don't own the MRAP, the sheriff's office does not own that vehicle. They've leased it, and at any time the government says enough with this, and they pull it back, they, they can take it back. This is more purpose-built for our, our needs, uh, and it would be utilized a lot of different ways. Financially, uh, if you look at it, uh, we tested the St. Bernard Parish, uh, vehicle. They got the first, uh, barricade in the state, right after Katrina, in '05. That vehicle's still operational. So, in a dollars and cents standpoint, that vehicle will be utilized 15 to 20 years. So, it's at the cost of roughly one unit per year for the next 10 years. If we can sacrifice one unit a year, that would have this vehicle, you know, met, paid for. And if it keeps one guy safe, it's worth five times that.
I agree with what you just said, and I think it's a good explanation, I just wish we would know, like, before, right before the meeting. And that's the last, that's just my point, is that we just, we just can't be put in a position to just, you know.
Yeah, this is a very, possibly the biggest investment to police departments.
It seems to me like someone would just say, hey, council, councilmen, whomever, this is what we wanna do, can we, you have any questions? But no one, no one even, I even called, I even wanted to know today, still, you don't hear anything, and then you come in a meeting, and then, you know, here's when we talk. I just think that's just not the way we should do business, when you're talking about a quarter of a million dollars.
Talk to you, gentlemen, ladies.
Any, uh, any further, uh, public comment? What's the plan, Mr. President?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Mr. President, please, for lack of a second, Mr. President.
Alright.
Number two, resolution approving OB Express located at 2280 Old Baton Rouge Highway, to obtain a permit to sell high-low packaged alcohol, the owner is OB Express LLC.
Good afternoon, Councilperson. I am coming to you tonight to ask for approval for, uh, a packaged alcohol, high-low, for a, um, it is a Junior Food Mart-type grocery on, uh, Old Baton Rouge Highway. It has been there before, and has also had alcohol at that location. The zoning is approved, and all of my inspections are approved, as well as the application is all in order and met all the requirements. So, I'm asking for approval tonight. Do we have a representative here? No? We did contact them, and, and let them know that they needed, needed to send someone here tonight.
Well.
Don't know if you wanna table it, or if you, um, wanna approve it.
Before we table it, I reckon we just delay, maybe they show up before the end of the meeting?
Sure, it's up to you.
Okay.
Because it, it really is only 6:05, so if they were, you know.
Alright.
So, we'll, we'll wait.
I'm not sure what they look like, so maybe, um, before the meeting ends, or ask, for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number three, resolution authorizing a demolition of property located 206 Wilbert Dangefield Drive, 100% damaged. Located in Council District 1, the owner is Tanya Matthews, 517 Barnes Avenue, Hattiesburg, Mississippi, 39401. Bobby.
Good evening. According to the photographs, this is pretty obvious, uh, contamination, uh, burned mobile home. Uh, we're recommending demolition, due to 100% damage.
Is anyone here representing that property? Do we have a council comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard. Johnny Blunt. Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Number four, resolution to approve the appointment of Seda Nain as Finance Director with an annual salary of $61,199, effective October 7th, 2015. Mayor?
After all the candidates that we interviewed, she was, uh, Seda, who had been with the city since 2006, has a degree from Southeastern, has been doing, preparing the city's annual budget, working closely with our auditors, uh, to ensure our compliance. Uh, was the obvious choice to replace Lady Frances, and, uh, I give you my recommendation for her approval as Director of Finance. Think she'd be a great asset, and has been a great asset to the city of Hammond.
Can we amend that to like $62,000, just to give her another dollar?
No, we cannot, we need to maintain our step plan, and that's why it's an odd number.
Well, I'll give her, we'll give her a dollar, we're doing this.
The salary's a long mag.
The mag actually, yes, the mag, just, just so that everybody's clear, we did send the salary out for review from MAG, and they, um, they situated her according to our department heads, and according to our overall city structure. So, she's on a step, and that's why the dollar amount is a little odd.
She's just looking out for you, that's all.
Alright. What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard. Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to authorize the Hammond Fraternal Order Police to sell beer within the boundaries, set for the Chili Cook-Off Event on Friday, November 20th, 2015, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And on Saturday, November 21st, 2015, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, you're not George Burge Ron.
Thank God every day for that.
Yeah, George, George had a, something he had to do, I guess.
So, state your name, Chad.
Chad Hill, Officer with Hammond Police Department.
Andre, excuse me, one second, Chad. Andre, normally we have the boundaries, is that an issue, or?
Well, the, when, was there some other?
I know, usually the boundaries are specified, I'm, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, because it's, there are, there are boundaries that are required.
We moved them down a little bit this year, to where the Blues and Barbecue, the, the area where they're at, that, that's where we moved.
Can we approve it, given the administration's right to verify the boundaries? Can we do that?
Yeah, I think that's, I, that's a good idea, and that is, you can approve this and have the administration set the boundaries. Approved by the administration.
Alright, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move that we, uh, accept the ordinance with the, and allowing the administration to set the boundaries.
Do you have a second? Your second, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard. Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi. Uh, number six, resolution authorize the Hammond Fraternal Order Police to obtain a waiver of the open containment law for the Chili Cook-Off Event, on Friday, November 20th, 2015, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and on Saturday, November 21st, 2015, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Motion to approve with the administration, uh, setting the boundaries for the event.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Number seven, resolution to approve the following changes to positions within the city of Hammond, City of Hammond Administrative Assistant, to Administration, Pay Grade 123, changing Public Information Office Pay Grade 123, Ms. Loretta Sevlin.
Good evening.
May I?
Uh, the position of Public Information Officer is within the budget, it was approved in this year's budget. However, there was no pay grade for that position. Uh, we sent the position and the description for the position to Management Advisory Group, and it came back at the same pay grade as the Administrative Assistant to the Administration. So, we're not gonna fill the position of Administrative Assistant to the Administration, but yet we're gonna move that money to, uh, Public Information Officer, which is at the same pay grade.
Right, so you're gonna actually delete that position?
Yes.
So, you have to actually do that, too?
Yeah, we can do that, too.
We probably should eliminate that, so that should be the position elimination, right?
It was, it was actually not budgeted at all, so, in essence, it was deleted from the budget. The only way we could restore the position is if we came back to council, and you approved to restore that position.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Loretta? What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for fiscal year 2014-15, and to authorize the mayor to sign the questionnaire, Lacy.
This is a compliance questionnaire that goes with our past fiscal year. Um, we perform this same questionnaire, it's one that's filled out by entities across the state. It is handed down by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office, and we're required by law to complete it. So, it's a standard form, you'll see not applicable on a lot of questions. Um, this is something that we do every year during our audit process, and they also test for compliance in these areas.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, number one, final adoption of ordinance to release performance bond letter of credit number 547, an amount of $60,000, and to accept a one-year maintenance bond, GSM 15388, an amount of $6,989.85. For all public improvements for the extension of West Robert Street, 60 by 145 feet of right-of-way, and the Thames subdivision located at 1010 West Robert Street, in accordance with as-built plans by Andrew Fowler.
So, move.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Item number two, final adoption of ordinance to approve and expand additional use request by First Presbyterian Church to allow Memorial Garden located at 411 West Charles Street, in accordance with the site plan dated 7/32/15, zoned MXC, DDD Historic Hire-Kate, recommended approval with conditions by the Zoning Commission.
So, move.
Roll call, please.
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Item number three, final adoption of orders for annexation into the city limits, initial zoning to CH, and to be placed in a city council district number five, requested by Alma M. Cali for Track 1 of the Cali Ballard Mini, partition being 1.346 acres, located on northwest corner of North Marsen Boulevard and West University Avenue, in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden, Jr., and their attachments.
So, move.
Roll call, please.
Janice Carter Beard.
Hi.
Lamar Marshall.
Hi.
Johnny Blunt.
Hi.
Jason Hood.
Hi.
Mike Williams.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Number four, final adoption of orders to amend Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances, to amend Article 4 regarding transportation network companies.
I would just like to point out that Tom is here now from Uber, um, if you have any questions, or, Tom, do you wanna make just a couple of statements? He was not able to be here earlier for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for having me, my name's Tom Hayes, I'm the General Manager for Uber in the Gulf Coast. Uh, I've, I've been with the company about two years, and helped see the expansion down here in the, uh, the greater New Orleans area, also in Mobile, Alabama, Baton Rouge, Lafayette. Uh, basically, what ride-sharing is, and what Uber does, is help connect, uh, people, local citizens who drive their vehicles, to riders, to provide safe, reliable, affordable transportation, um, beyond kind of the, the basic services, and, and seeing people be happy on both sides of the coin, uh, with riders getting where they need to do, where, where they need to go safely, as well as, uh, local citizens having greater economic opportunity. There is also great community benefits that, that we see, uh, in Baton Rouge, for example, one year after, after we've entered, uh, operating there, we've seen DUIs go down 17%, um, so that, that's a real benefit. We also pride ourselves on providing service to areas that are previously underserved. In Chicago, for example, 40% of the trips either start or end in underserved neighborhoods. Uh, so, um, you know, I, I, I think both on a very practical level, but also a community benefit standpoint, unlocking this technology for, for the city of Hammond would be of great benefit, and, uh, I think your, your citizens would be excited, especially, uh, at the college, uh, where, where I imagine, um, transportation is, is not as readily available. We think this would be a great way to, to provide that, so I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
I have a question. Um, so, how much, I'm just curious, would an Uber be from, let's say downtown, for a college student, on a night they may have been drinking, to, to college? Is there a minimum?
How many miles would that, how many miles would that be, you think?
Uh, it's a couple of miles, three, three and a half, four miles, five miles.
Yeah, typically.
Very short, I mean, but, so is there a minimum, and?
Yeah, so typically, we, we, and it, and it's based on the market, and we haven't priced this out yet, but typically, we see about a $5 minimum. Uh, if, if you're only going a couple of miles, um, it, you know, it probably wouldn't, wouldn't be much more than that. It's, it's basically, it's based on time and distance, and then we have a safe rides fee, kind of on top of that. But, um, you know, in, in most markets, we, we try and price ourselves 30 to 50% cheaper than you typically see, see a cab. So, it, it kinda depends on, on the market dynamics, and we need to think about that, but.
Much cheaper than DUI.
Oh, much, much cheaper than a DUI, yeah, no, no, I mean, that, that's a, a big part of, of what we're trying to provide, is, is a much better option than putting yourself in that situation.
Go ahead, I have a question.
So, we, uh, like, uh, some roommates, they came downtown, both were charged.
No, so you request a ride through, through your account, um, one nice feature we have is you can do a splair, uh, fare split. Uh, so, if, if you're both in the car, you can have the person who originally requested, basically ping the other person, say, do you wanna split this fare with me? They say yes, and they, they can both get charged, but it, it's really just based on the, the requister initially.
Question, Mr. President, so by adopting the ordinance, that's now allowing Uber and Uber-type companies to petition to, to apply for a license?
That's correct.
And then that license is approved by the city?
That's correct.
And then they can operate?
That's correct.
So, that has to still happen, though, right?
That's correct.
And within that, is there, is there any, um, marketing requirements that, I didn't even read that, I didn't get a chance to read the whole thing. Like, for instance, how, once they get the license, do we require that they do any marketing to make, you know, to really?
We don't re-
Social media.
Yeah, we don't require our businesses to market, um, we would just certainly.
So, it's not like a public utility service, like, you know, that would have to really do, so they, I guess what I, the question I'm trying to ask, and I'm trying to get it the right, right way. Like, we have cable, and we have different public utilities that we use, and they have certain mandates that require them to do, to be a part of the community, like intergy and those things. Do we have that as a, as a? intergy and those things. Do we have that as a requirement, you know, for, would this be like a public?
This is just going to be a regular business operating in Hammond.
It's a private company?
Right.
We actually get a fee off of this, though?
Yeah, for registration.
So that's kind of what I was trying, is I just had a horrible way of saying it. There is a fee that the city collects, so that fee is then for the purpose of administration?
Coming into your general fund.
Yeah, and the other thing I should...
Not a lot, but it's to be negotiated.
I didn't answer the question, I didn't answer the question the right way, but that's what I was wondering, if that was some kind of a deal there.
Yeah, and a few other things to note. Before we let anyone on the platform, drivers go through a comprehensive background check. It's a seven-stage check where we look at county records, we look at federal records, we look at multi-state records, sex offender registry, we look at a driver motor vehicle record, and we do a social trace to actually identify where people have lived. Once a partner is actually on the platform, we also provide a million dollars worth of liability insurance while they're on the app and engaged in a trip. So, you know, just to put that in perspective, the requirement for taxis in Louisiana is $50,000, so it's substantially higher than what's required of a typical taxi. So it provides that protection for both the rider and the driver.
Any more questions?
I have a question. Do the drivers work under your license?
Yeah, so essentially, we would apply to be a transportation network company, and then you would apply to us. There's no upfront fees or anything like that for a driver, and the way it works is a revenue share. So typically, the driver takes home 80% of the fare, and there's a technology fee that goes to Uber on top of that, but there's no front-end cost.
And you just confirm that they have the amount of insurance they need on their vehicle?
Yeah, so to operate, you need just regular personal insurance, but while you're actually operating as an Uber, we provide the primary insurance, so that it would actually, your insurance wouldn't even come into play, but we do check that you do have basic personal insurance.
Okay. That's great.
They were, the reason this all came to us is part of the North Shore Safety Coalition brought it to us. They're focused on safe initiatives, safe driving, seatbelt checks, and reducing our DWIs across the board, so.
And it's a perfect fit for this city because every cab service we've had just hadn't had enough business to sustain itself. So this is just a good fit for us here.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's completely flexible, and, you know, one of the benefits is you can really grow when there is demand, when you may have big events. You know, we see that in a lot of other cities. Baton Rouge, for example, we really grow it, and you see a lot more people out when the football games are going on, and then it kind of shrinks back down when it's not happening. And the majority of our drivers do this less than 10 hours a week. So for most people, it's a nice way to make some extra income, and it provides that infrastructure where you don't need to have it all year round.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah.
This is a final document.
This is the final document.
I'm sorry.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Introduction of ordinance set public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance before, before move to that, did anybody come in from the OB store?
No.
So let's...
Which one was that? Which resolution?
Make a motion to table item number two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Number one, introduction of orders to amend the city of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2015-16 to transfer one at $17,011 from the court-awarded asset fund 205 to local government assistance program grant account, project 3160 to replace the roof on the police station.
When we originally brought down this grant, we did not specify where the grant match was coming from. So it is coming from court-award assets, and that is a different fund, and so that's why we're before you tonight requesting the ordinance to be introduced and then to go to public hearing and for approval at the next meeting. But this is to match the smaller grant amount of, I think it was around $15,700. It's not a lot that we get from the local government assistance program, but it was a nice grant to come in, and then the remainder of it is coming from court-awarded asset funds.
Motion to introduce.
Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for October 20, 2015.
Item number two, introduction of orders to create the position of sports coordinator pay grade 119 to replace the position of youth coordinator pay grade 119. Mr. Monroe and Ms. Loretta.
I'll start, and I'll let Mr. Monroe finish. This is his department. The position we moved, promoted our youth coordinator to recreation supervisor, which left that position open. The department, the director in the department thought that the position of sports coordinator would be a better fit within his department, so the position of sports coordinator was sent out for, to management advisory for a review as to where it should be placed. That position, too, came in at a 119, same as youth coordinator. So that's what we're requesting, and Mr. Monroe can tell you maybe the reasons behind sports coordinator instead of youth coordinator.
Yes, sports coordinator would better define the job position because the individual, whoever it may be, would be dealing basically with more sports than programs per se. When I say programs, I'm talking about day camp or summer camp, after-school program. This individual would be dealing with actual sports, men's sports, adult softball, baseball, whatever it may be, basketball. So that would be a better fit for that. Also, programming a liaison for, just like we have a lot of incoming camps of YBOA, that person will be the lead person to look after things like that.
And the supervisor will do the...
Continue to...
The non-sports.
Right, non-sports.
That's his baby.
Okay. Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.[1775.48]